United States of America. And do everybody. One nation, under God, indivisible, everything is just from.
Good morning, everybody. We're calling a meeting to order. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes and we've looked them all over. Second, I have a motion in the second. Is any further discussion on it? All those in favor? I say aye. I propose. Motion carries. Rich?
Got a DOT agreement for the detour on project they're gonna be doing this early this. DOT and then you're gonna, you're replacing the Fox cover of some sort of bridge, whatever they've got over there, just West to Pearl. The detour they want to use is gonna be Balsam Avenue. South into Saro Gordo County. Saro Gordo County, then they're gonna come back up on Eagle Avenue, which comes right through Fertile. But we're really, it's our two miles of, our one mile of Balsam and then our park park route through. Is the agreement now? Talked to the DOT a little bit, they. They were wondering, I believe we're the ones that have, is our. Foreign market extension through Fertile. I think first they maybe contact the city of Fertile, see if they needed a, an agreement there. They didn't want traffic through Fertile, and I said it's part of market route. They can't deny it. I mean, I can't imagine they should deny it, but so. Let's go with Main Street for what they're not enough.
Yeah.
So, me and it's ours. We maintain the twenty-two foot wide section. Remember our twenty-eighty agreement, so. While they don't want the, they maybe don't want the increased traffic, that's probably really not their call. And I don't know whether they're a detour or not, they would really be able to. Make, that would be logical for us. A bridge, I mean, it's already a. On the two, three. An eight mile. Out of the way detour for him, so. Anyway, that's the agreements for. The proposed amount of money. Road use tax money, we'll see when the project is done, is estimated at about six thousand dollars. We'll get that. Probably a year from now.
Yeah.
Whenever the project is closed out.
Man, there isn't a better detour than that. That river screws things up. There's nothing square down there to go around, is there?
And they'll evaluate all of them. You know, when they've got oversight load, you know, they'll still evaluate all that stuff, so they have to go through that.
We need a motion then to. The agreement for the detour. Your second?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Any idea how long, I guess, Rich?
Um, no, I guess that, I think they're gonna start here in. May sometime, but I don't know. I might would guess. Yeah, that's amazing. Nobody kidding. I'm giving my guess.
You leave this, or?
I'll need to send it back.
I'll leave that for you there. What else you got for?
Um, I'm gonna contact, I'm still working. Struggling with the new DOT layout with plans. So we're still working on our, our upcoming paving plans. They changed the whole format of how to put plans together. They went from an Excel spreadsheet to a web-based one. Now it's a new learning process, but I'm stumbling my way through it, so. I, I'm. Hoping I can get something by the end of the May for letting, but I'm not positive yet. It just depends on the schedule. Once I get that, I mean, the plans are easy enough to put together, but I'm just struggling through their processes to that, and we've gotta get. All the notices and stuff out. I wanna have plans on when we do that, so. Hopefully, we can have something in a month or so. So, um, then I'm gonna contact. John here on the purchase of that motor beer. Maybe we'll pay half of it. I don't wanna have it like fiscal year. We should have some funds available.
So, is it technically a lease or what is it?
Right now, we've just been renting it for winter.
Cause if it's.
But we'll do a purchase.
So it'll be a purchase, not like a lease or something?
No, we'll purchase it. Have an agreement, but then pay that, pay a portion now and a portion to buy.
Cause that would have to go. Like. Like county debt?
Just call them.
Or wha- if whatever the agreement is, let me know, so.
It won't be a lease, it'll be a purchase. With a payment in, in this fiscal year in payment, or we can hold off and do the whole payment next fiscal year. They don't really seem to care. We've already got. I don't know. Rent from January applied to the purchase price already, so.
We're probably already in trouble, cause even leasing something that's over fifty thousand dollars.
Leasing or renting? Is it, isn't? No, really, what's that? We're renting it. I mean, technically, there's different taxes, but. So, that fifty thousand something to play for payment or per total purchase?
Yes, well.
Okay, well, if the lease agreements.
Right.
Over, over thousand. I would say that would be a, an odd or something that's over fifty.
Just know probably around thirteen thousand a month. So, I don't.
You have a purchase agreement?
Uh, yeah, I know I have a lease agreement with specific, be specific to a total amount or a rental agreement. I mean, I know you're doing. I think we had a rental agreement, and then if we decided to purchase it, they would apply the rental.
Yeah.
Cost to the purchase when we decided.
So you haven't decided a dollar amount for the purchase?
Oh, he gave me an estimate, wouldn't it be, I'll get within this.
So you'll get a solid amount, and then you'll have.
Yeah. I'll work on this, right?
Just trying to keep it under.
No, I know.
Yes, our network, yeah, lease, what, what is the? The rule with the lease thing or whatever?
If you'd actually find a lease. Then you, then you have a specific amount, fifty thousand, I mean, I can't go over fifty thousand.
Without.
Rental agreement. For time. But being it's just an estimate on purchase. Probably on that fine line.
They gave us a, they gave us a rental price, whatever it was per month, and then. If we decided to purchase it, they would apply that rent to the purchase price.
To the purchase.
I'll look at my people.
Would be technically called a loan, which.
Yeah. Sounds like a question.
Yeah.
Oh. And then, uh. We're gonna be on Bladen.
You gonna bring up Finch?
Oh, I could. We went out and had Dan come out and help me, talk to the landowner and Finch. Kind of told him we've been trying to get ahold of him for quite a while, and. I said, my biggest concern right now was having that dumpster that close to the road. If you can get rid of that within the next week. And then start cleaning up the ditch.
Right.
Rhybeme stuff, and. He seemed to be compliant and wanted to comply. We'll see how it goes.
I did log in our department, so we get the thirty day ticker going.
If the two words mean stealing's like price, they still let that stuff play around. It's, it's high now.
That's what I hear.
Well, making more money stockpiling tires than stealing.
He tried to go into that, but we stayed away from that. We just.
Yeah, we're not after that.
Yeah, no, I could, I didn't care what he was doing with his property. I just wanted stuff on right away, but it seemed to be his mortgage. Getting his extracurricular activities paid for.
Dashing some steel.
Yeah, cash and steel person.
With cash.
But none of my business. Appreciate it. Finally got ahold of him. He's been using on that thing. I said I wanted to haul the stuff out, but I really wanted to talk to somebody before I did it, and so.
See what happens.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you. Anything else for the? The resolution?
Technically, but not. Um, Mike Bodie. Told me it was time for destruction of noxious weeds for the year, so I changed the date. No new weeds or anything, and nothing got taken out, so I just need a motion for, pass the resolution.
I'm going to vote for the, pass the resolution for the destructive of noxious weeds.
I'm looking at.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on it? Roll call, baby. Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye. Resolution is adopted. Do I need to sign that copy? Uh, claims. Oh, drainage, oh, drainage claims.
Motion to approve drainage claims.
I'm sorry. I got a motion, second, approve the drainage claims. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries. Guys, you get a chance to check over the claims?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion to approve the claims.
I'll make a motion to approve claims.
Your second? I have a motion, the second to approve claims, and further step on them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose, motion carries. You got any reports this month? This week?
Yes.
Payroll, that was really? How about liquor and cigarette? Then, we got a resolution. We got that?
There are a couple of places for you to sign.
We have. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Resolution of authorizing early redemption of general obligation county refunding bond series twenty fifteen A. Whereas Worth County, Iowa previously issued its six million five hundred fifty-five thousand dollar general obligation county refunding bond series. Twenty fifteen A dated October fifteenth of twenty fifteen. A portion of which currently remains outstanding as follows. In year twenty-four, eight hundred ninety-five thousand, and twenty-five, nine hundred fifteen thousand, and twenty-six, five hundred seventy thousand. And whereas pursuant to the resolution authorized the issuance of the twenty fifteen A bonds. The county reserves the right to call part or all the twenty fifteen bonds for optional early redemption on June first of twenty twenty-three. Or on any date thereafter on terms of par and accrued interest, and where it has been proposed that the board authorize the redemption. Of the remaining outstanding maturities of the twenty fifteen A bonds on June first of twenty twenty-three. Now therefore, it is resolved by the board supervised with Worth County, Iowa as follows. Section one, U M B Bank is registered and paying agent for the twenty fifteen A bonds. Is hereby authorized to take all action necessary to call the outstanding maturities. For early redemption on the redemption date, U M B Bank is further authorized and directed to give. Notice of such redemption by sending notice by registered mail. Or such other means as may be acceptable to the registered owners of the twenty fifteen A bonds. To the registered owners of the all maturity to be redeemed at the address of strong. On the county's registration books, not less than thirty days prior to the redemption date. Section two, all resolutions order parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this resolution, the extent of such conflict are hereby repealed. This resolution shall be in full force affecting me upon its adoption and approval as provided by law. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
I want my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? Roll call, vote, Smeedy.
Aye.
Stone.
I have.
Lowbird, aye. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve is duly adopted. Um. I guess we'll skip down the. Board appointments. Did you come in? What does anything for internet domain? Hold on, I have to talk.
I haven't got either one yet.
Okay. Melissa, are you on?
I am. I'm gonna work on the, uh, Haley and I are gonna work on the, um. The mark, the calendar of events. So, um, we'll be reaching out to the communities and finalizing the, uh, dates for the community events calendar. And then I have, um, a draft of a, um. Development agreement, and I'm just going through it, and then I'll send it, um. Your way to, it's just, it's just a blank, um, one. I'll send it to, off to Jeff too, and you can maybe build your own from there. If you want. For the, um, interchange.
Yeah, that sounds good. If you got a, something we can go off of them.
It's twenty pages, so. Enos, there's a lot of reading to do.
About that time, we need to probably get something going there, so for self and lots, and we can. We ahead of the game.
Anything else?
Nope, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Uh, first with Cubes. The computer. Feeling I'm gonna do it. Important discussions. Just open meeting there, uh. Now they're still waiting on buses, but they're getting closer, like it sounds. Um, that's new hires down there, so they're back to full staff. Dispatchers is always a tough thing to keep in there, so. But looks like everything's doing good there, and I know they're nervous to talk, and there's some more, um. Grant monies out there for, uh, housing upgrades, I think. Beds, put some more out there, but, uh. Uh, it's available, and NiCog is actually qualified to do them, so they're gonna be like just the administrator, and people want to. Utilize them in the region, so. Uh, they'll help do the paperwork and that, I guess, it's like technically already do it, but just a different style of grant than what they normally do, so.
Housing grants for like loan command?
I'm not sure what the, if there's any income requirements, not a hundred percent sure, but. I do know it's out there, but it's, it sounds like, uh, like ten, nine dollars or something like that out there for. For.
We just. How's your soul, then you done all that?
Yeah. And the biggest problem to have all that is, is contractors, many contractors do it. Still, we have contractors, there's like one, one, four million sitting out there right now that they about get done, they've got the money, but cannot. Get them completed, cause they don't have the contractors to do the work, and so it's really stretching out some of these projects, but. So, now there's any contractors or anybody deep. Upgrades, or there's some grants out there, but there's plenty of work for contractors. At the time. Studios. That's all I have.
I have nothing.
Yeah. Um. Anything on the agenda we need to have? Looks fine to me. First, just draw on the corner.
Yeah, it is. We love it.
To get up what a corner. Okay, well, we got a. Public hearing at nine, and then John at nine thirty, and those kind of go all. They pretty much follow each other, those resolutions one after the other, so we can't really do any of them right now. So I guess I'll just assess it for now.
Yeah.
It's nine AM, so I will take a motion to open the public hearing. The move. I have a motion, the second of the public hearing, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, public hearing is open. Um, public hearing is on the proposed budget for FY twenty-four. Is there any comments? Questions from the public? Anybody out there?
Don't.
There's just chat, but, um.
Nothing, no comments yet?
Everybody's seen it, it's been in the paper.
Posted. I'll ask once again, is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second, I have a motion, the second, close public hearing, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carries. I will reconvene the regular session. Uh, resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash thirteen FY twenty-four elected official salary, yeah, well. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. Whereas the Worth County Compensation Board meets annuity to recommend a compensation schedule. For elected officials for the fiscal year immediately following, in accordance with Iowa Code Chapters three thirty-one, period nine oh five, and three thirty-one, period nine oh seven. And whereas the Worth County Conversation Board met on December seventh, twenty twenty-two, and made the following salary recommendations. For the following elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July first of twenty twenty-three. Um, elected official auditor sixty-three, five seventeen, a twelve percent increase to seventy-one, one thirty-nine. The county attorney eighty-nine thousand, three thirty-four, and eight percent increase to recommended salary of eighty-six, forty-one. Recorder sixty-three, five seventeen, a twelve percent increase to seventy-one, one thirty-nine. The sheriff was eighty-three thousand, five hundred, a twenty-five percent increase to one oh four, three seventy-five. Supervisor chair was thirty-two, one seventy-five, and eight percent increase to thirty-four, seven oh nine. Supervisor. The rest of supervisors were thirty-one thousand, six seventy-five apiece. An eight percent increase to thirty-four thousand, two oh nine, and the treasurer was sixty-three, five seventeen, a twelve percent increase to seventy-one, one thirty-nine. Therefore, be resolved that the Worth County Board of Supervisors approves the following salary adjustments. For the following elected officials for the fiscal year, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three. Elected official. Auditor approved salary sixty-seven, three twenty-eight, a six percent increase. The county attorney ninety-two thousand, nine oh seven, a four percent increase. The recorder sixty-seven thousand, three twenty-eight, a six percent increase. The sheriff ninety-three thousand, nine thirty-eight, a twelve and a half percent increase. Supervisor chair was thirty-three, four forty-two, a four percent increase. The remaining supervisors was thirty-two, nine forty-two, a four percent increase, and the treasurer was sixty-seven, three twenty-eight, a six percent increase. I'll take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash thirteen. Don't move. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, sneeby. Stone. Lower, I, resolution is duly adopted. You, I thought maybe you were. Next on the agenda of resolution twenty twenty three dash fourteen is the adoption of the Worth County Fiscal Year twenty three twenty four proposed budget. Whereas the board of supervisors have a public hearing on Monday twenty four twenty twenty three, we see comments regarding post FY twenty four. Budget expenditures and revenues as was published, public notice. In the April twelfth and thirteenth, twenty twenty three issue of official county newspapers, the North Anger and the Valley Junction signal. We presented the public hearing on April twenty four twenty twenty two. Therefore, the board supervisors. Hereby approves the proposed twenty three twenty four budgets as was presented in budget. Budget certified as attached, I'll take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash fourteen. Is there a second?
I will second it.
I have a motion of second to approve the resolution on the proposed budget, is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, sneeby.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbert, aye. Motion is duly adopted, resolution is passed. Review amendments for the FY twenty three budget. And then set public hearing date time for that. So.
So what I'm proposing is May fifteenth at nine AM. And. I started looking at. The one thing we're gonna have to do, I'm gonna have to do some thinking on it yet, but. The. Juggling around we're doing with loans and stuff, so that's gonna have to be reflected in the budget since it's still gonna happen by the end of this year. There's. Few more spots. I think I want to put five thousand more in your legal. Cause you're getting close to, that's already gone, what were the fifteen thousand that we put in, so I'm gonna put some more in just in case something happens by the end of the year. The majority of it is because of the. Loans. I know Jim's gonna have something because W C D A grant come through. Hazmat ended up charging more than. Then I had budgeted by a hundred dollars, a hundred and three dollars, so we gotta bump that up. And I'm already gonna be in trouble because I already paid it. Um, ambulance, um, for medical examiner, I'm kinda nervous on that, so I might put some more in there again. Last time, oh, I guess we haven't bumped that yet this year, but I keep it. Kind of healthy because I know it's gonna hit. And it's not getting any cheaper. Insurance, I want to bump up. Workman's comp. And. Unemployment, unemployment's been hitting us too, we're over budget on that. So, yeah. So I'm gonna put some money there then. Juvenile justice, you know how that's going, so I want to put ten thousand more in there, that's enough. I had bumped it from twenty to thirty for medical and health services and we're already twenty seven too. So just to get through one more quarter, I kinda want to put a little more in. General services, that's always a crapshoot because we never know what's gonna be. Broken. I need to go up on safety and protective supplies, natural gas and fixed plant and equipment, maintenance and repair. And then the rest of it is long. So I'll be putting that together and getting it in the newspaper and. You know, if there's anything you guys, any questions you have or?
That'll be the last one for the year, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Have to have it down by May thirty first.
I'll make motion for set the. Date. Probably date to May fifteenth on the budget amendment. Nine AM.
Yep.
I have a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, closed. Motion carries. And I will recess this meeting until nine.
Good morning. Been a busy year at the IDDA or?
Pardon me?
Has it been a busy year at the IDDA?
Uh, it's always a busy year, some busier than others. Second here, just get them organized. Okay. First of all, pleasure to be here as always and bringing you up to speed on what's going on. First of all, a piece of good news. Talk a little bit about waters in the United States. And where that whole issue is and. Refresh your memory a little bit, this is, this has been an issue that's sort of been a. Ping pong ball. That has gone back and forth between administrations. Go back. Prior to President Obama, we had a rule that said that EPA could could regulate navigable waters and the key word was navigable. Obama administration came in and took the word navigable out. So that potentially meant that EPA could regulate every puddle of water in the United States, including drainage districts. That got. Sueed, but sued filed against it. Court put a stain on it, so that never went into effect. Trump administration comes along. Changes the rule again. Which also got sued. And now we have the Biden administration that's come in and changed the rule again. Which has also been sued. So. Where we are in all this is that. The Biden administration issued their rule in the last week of December. And then rules actually go into effect when they're published. I believe it was published. Due to late January or early February. And then there was. Several organizations that filed suit against that. And there were several states that filed suit against it, including the state of Iowa, joined with a number of other states and filing suit against the rule. And the rule. Did actually go into effect in Iowa for about a week. And I know I had. At least two engineers called me and say. What do we do? You know, are we supposed to be following this or? You know, what is our obligation? I really didn't have an answer for. We had received no indications from the Corps or EPA what they were gonna do in terms of enforcement. And everybody was sort of. What's gonna happen next? Well. About a week after the rule went into effect, as I mentioned, Iowa was one of a number of states that have filed suit. Federal judge in North Dakota. Put a stay on the rule, put a hold on the. So we had went back out of effect. In Iowa. And the other states that joined in the lawsuit. And basically the judge said that the rule was flawed in a number of different ways. Our key concern, looking at it from. You know, a drainage perspective or a landowner perspective is. You know, the the rule did not appear to be clear. In terms of. When you have to get a clean water act permit, when you don't have to get a clean water act from. That would have met. Individual decisions on individual issues, which would not be. A very good scenario, as you can, as you can imagine, and we certainly don't want to have drainage districts in. Position of having to get clean water act permits from the D N R to do a drainage repair. We've got. You know, thirty plus counties would organize drainage, thirty eight hundred organ, you know, drainage districts. Not to mention private drainage all over the place. And with no clarity. In terms of when you have to get, you know, a clean water act, so. The good news is the rule is on hold right now. The other piece of that is that there is a. Case pending before the US Supreme Court, which is known as the SAKETT. That case has been heard. All the arguments have been made. There's supposed to be a decision on that in this court term, which would be by June thirtieth. And that case directly goes to the question of what does EPA have the authority to re-regulate in terms of private owner, private lands? So Supreme Court could come down. On our side too. And send the EPA back to the drawing board, which is of course though, send them back to the drawing board or have them say. We're not gonna mess with it in light of the EPA decision. So that's the good news. We will continue to watch and like you said, there'll be further developments when the Supreme Court issues its its decision. Second thing I'd mention quickly is that I was, well, as you know, during the annual conference each year, we have. A meeting set aside where the drainage clerks. Have sort of a meeting within a meeting and break out from our group and go into into their own meeting. I've had a number of drainage clerks tell me that and county auditors tell me that that is probably. The best meeting they go to every year in terms of help and assistance and drainage. I had a drainage clerk in another county approach me last year and said, you know, we ought to do that. Meeting twice a year. So we took that issue up at the meeting in December and the drainage clerks to decide that they're gonna have two meetings a year. So we have a meeting set aside for. July twentieth. And for Dodge and. You know, while it's just for drainage clerks of. County supervisors, as crusties want to attend, it's gonna be very nuts and bolts and very nitty gritty and be, you know, a good opportunity to learn about drainage, so. That's on the books. Talk about the legislature a little bit, it has. Been a quiet year for the most part in the legislature. They. For DM, I think ends this week, which normally means that this week could be the last week of the legislature, but I don't think it's gonna be. They still have a lot of budget work to do. And they still have yet to come to agreement on what they're gonna do on property taxes, Senate and House have different approaches on property tax reform. So there's a lot of work to be done and I don't really see that getting resolved in a week's time. So I'm guessing probably at least two weeks left yet in the session. It had been a fairly quiet year until we had a bill hit. Couple of weeks ago, which is House File. Seven eleven, I believe. Yes, House File seven. And again, this doesn't really have a, probably won't have a huge impact on you all, but as you, as you know, when you look at. At chapter four sixty eight, and not only talks about. Drainage districts, it also talks about levy districts. And levy districts are predominant generally along the. Coastline of the state of Iowa, we have a lot of levy districts over by the Missouri River. And we have some levy districts over by the Mississippi River. And of course, the function is different, it is to mitigate flooding, control and mitigate flooding. And. For the most part, when laws pass, drainage laws pass, they affect. Levy districts and drainage districts equally. But levy districts are different in the sense that they. When they issue. Bills for repairs or improvements. They can spread that cost evenly among all landlords, just doesn't have to be by. By benefit. They can just, you know, we've got five landowners. We're gonna buy it by five and send bills. So anyway. There has been some concern expressed in the legislature that. A lot of the levy districts, particularly along the Missouri River. Are not being maintained as well as they should and. Most of these districts are trustee run districts, they're not supervisor run districts. And of course flooding along the Missouri River has been a very big issue the last few years, so you've got the state saying, you know, are we doing the best job we can in terms of. Controlling flooding, so they. Have had Homeland Security, State Department of Homeland Security going in and doing assessments of levies, this is not. Adversarial, this is, they're trying to get an honest view of what the levies look like and what they can do to help. So they've done a preliminary assessment of a lot of the levies along the Missouri River. And House File seven eleven is a piece of legislation that that comes as a result of that study. And essentially what they're gonna do is several things, first of all, they're gonna create a pot of money of five million dollars funded by. Gambling revenue. And that money will be used as cost share for levy repair and improvement. Secondly, they're gonna do. A full flood study of the levies along the river and. Do a numerical ranking in terms of worst to best or best to worst, as the case may be. So if they say, for example, one is the best levy and five is. You mean a danger of collapse or whatever, clearly they're gonna, you know, target the revenue to the, to those levies that are in. The worst shape and it is cost share, it's not hundred percent funding, it's just cost share, it's gonna have to be money. Contributed at the local level too, to be able to attract this part of this five million dollar cost share. So that bill is passed one of the chambers, it's sitting over. I believe in the Senate Ways and Beings right now. Awaiting action. The other. Thing that bill does is create a interim study committee. With a fairly broad impact, you know, in terms of. They're gonna look at drainage law. And that's basically what it says, we're gonna look at drainage law and if they think there are changes that need to be made. They're gonna recommend those changes to the legislature. I did hear. You know, I mentioned the study that Homeland Security did, I did hear a presentation on that that was delivered to the. Water Resources Coordinating Committee. I sit in on the presentation and I, we were actually consulted when they were doing this, these assessments. I sat in on my study and I talked to the gentleman who delivered it and asked him to appear. At our annual meeting, so that'll be one of the presentations that are annual meeting is basically the. Homeland Security assessment of levies and what needs to be done to bring them up to speed. The other thing I mentioned quickly. You know, we had. Legislation passed. Several years ago and go back now. Several years ago, wanna go back now. Used to be in state law that if you were doing a drainage repair. And that repair exceeded fifty thousand dollars in cost, you had to get. An engineer's report as part of that repair. Several years ago, we went and got that law changed. It got changed to the competitive bid threshold, so fifty thousand dollars became a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, so. Up to a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars before you were mandated to have an engineer. That is a number that is set by D O T. And that number changed January first. So we're now at a hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. And that basically reflects. Inflation cost of doing business, et cetera, so. Now. You can order repair up to a hundred and ninety six thousand dollars, you're not, you're not mandated to get an engineer support, certainly you can do so, you can do so at any time, that's really up to you. Um, and certainly if, if repairers got some. Question marks or questionable areas in it, uh, certainly would recommend that you get an engineer's report. But, uh, that, that is at your discretion, so, um. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I was, uh, a lot of counties doing with the carbon pipelines and drainage districts. Have a lot of them, I know, we, you know, we've seen, uh. The, the draft that you guys put out of the ordinance and we've discussed that we haven't. Uh, pulled the trigger on it yet, or just kinda wanted to see what others are doing, I guess, too.
Yeah. I, I don't have a, an exhaustive list of what counties have done, I know we've had a lot of interest. In the, in the, uh, resolution, I've sent out a lot of copies of it, I know, I know some counties have adopted it. Um, I had. Thought myself that there might. Be action in the legislature this year, um, on carbon pipelines. The House did pass a bill. Incentive overs to Senate, but the Senate does not seem to be inclined to do anything, so I think the, uh. The laws, as they, you know, relate to. Pipelines and landowner thresholds and all that kinda good stuff are, are not gonna change. Senate could do something this past week, but I'm not hearing much. Skull about that says the Senate is interested in doing anything. So I think the laws that are in place are gonna be in place, so certainly I think you all as trustees of districts. If you've got pipelines coming through, uh, would be well served by making sure that, uh, your drainage infrastructure is protected. You wanna do that other way, yeah, but I would. Yeah, so, that's.
Yeah, and that's, we've got some drainage down there, should kind of cover it. For anything future, so yeah, we're just. Just kinda feeling that out again, I'm, I'm sure we'll bring it back up to the table.
I remember when Dakota Access came through, and our resolution was actually written in response to Dakota Access when it was coming through, and, uh. I can remember early on in the process when Dakota Access was being discussed, that I got a phone call in my office from somebody with Dakota Access and. Said, uh, how many drainage districts are there in the state of Iowa? Said, well. About thirty eight hundred. Just dead silence, just dead silence, he goes, you're kidding me, he said, no. And I think Dakota Access found out, much to their surprise, exactly how much, um. Our drainage districts have protect themselves, and they were not aware of, and, uh. So we, we wrote a resolution that, uh, has, has some teeth in it, and also creates a funding source so that you've got money there to do repairs if you need to do repairs, so. Um, it's not to say it to be all and end all, it's get. It's a word document, so it can be changed, and, and we, we designed it that way, but we wanted to give. At least a starting point for, uh, supervisors to look at if they're interested in doing so, so. I can tell you that it's been written by attorneys who know what they're doing, and it's been, it's been tested and so far it's been good.
And where's one of the fortunate counties that's got a bunch of drainage? Let's see them. Those people get protected by it. They pay enough as it is?
Yeah. And we, uh, we changed the wording a little bit as time has gone on, because we just started off with Dakota Access, and then we had wind farms coming in, so we wanted to protect the wind farms and we had. High capacity transmission lines going in, so we wanted to have the, the language broad enough for high. I can, so it, it's, it's pretty broad language and, uh. We don't have it put in place specifically with solar farms in mind, but I, I don't. Think there would have to be. Significant changes to do that, it's the same kind of, um.
Same kind of, same principle.
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
So if you got a major county. Lateral or tile, or a large tile.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know much about solar farms in terms of what they have to do underground when they put those installations in, but I'm guessing they'd be. I gotta have feeder line somewhere.
It would be, yeah, the post, I'm not sure where they put those down. Well, there's, but there's easements. I mean, they can't build them, nobody can.
No.
I mean, if they do. It'd be treated like a fence.
Yeah.
Right, so you think they wouldn't build. But it's good to have it covered.
Well, yeah. Yeah. You would think, and I, you know, I don't know, the, the solar farms are, are. You know, when you put up a wind farm, you've gotta have a certain wind regime to justify a wind farm. Solar farms, you can pretty much put any, so maybe if they were gonna be over drainage district, they think twice and say, you know, maybe this is in the best place for it. Yeah.
Not at all, I mean, I think when people think rain, drainage districts, they'll think.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, somebody let the trees grow over top of the fire, and we just, people were getting mad, we just, we knew the whole thing now.
Yeah, yeah. Understand, yeah, but it's kinda the same for us.
Yeah. Waterworks lawsuits going on, are they all done, like the record, is that done?
Nothing going on that I'm aware of right, yeah, pretty quiet.
The hundred and nine, we can, we can always get an engineer under a hundred and ninety six thousand, but at a hundred and ninety six thousand, we have to. What triggers? What dollar figure is it that triggers a? Public hearing, twenty thousand or fifty thousand?
I think it's fifty.
We usually have them anyway.
Yes.
Information.
Yeah.
If you'd like, we've got a, um. Uh, flow chart. Like you said, your auditor, that, that basically outlines. I don't know what Bolton and Mink is, uh, this is, but I'll, I'll send this to you. If your amount is this, you do this, if your amount is this, you do this, and it just walks you.
Right. Anything else you guys? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else on the agenda, is anything I missed? Yeah, then that case, I will take a motion to adjourn, so. I got a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.